You got it.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're all here and so now we have some minutes to approve. Is everyone at the table on how they're packing for minutes? Okay, so I'm gonna just give a quick review. Has anyone so far noticed anything that they want to change?
I noticed that the January 3rd one, it says that 50 and 44.
Thank you. Okay. once they're approved. Great, so if anyone wanted to read up on them, they can, but I'm just seeing that there's another.
This was just dropped off today.
Oh, okay.
Just something for the history.
Okay, great. So do we have a motion to approve these minutes of January 3rd?
With the corrections.
With the correction noted of re-attendance. So second, second, okay, all in favor? Aye and opposed? Excellent, minutes of January 23rd are approved. And now we have the 24th. Okay. And that was it. Okay. Yep, great. Okay, does anyone have anything to amend or add to the minutes? The 24th, we have a motion to approve the minutes of January 24th, 2019. Second, all in favor of approving? Aye and opposed? Excuse, ooh, you never get to use that one. It means it's a stain. A stain. But we knew it even, but.
You're not accusing yourself of a mistake.
The only other thing more firm than that is accepting something in extension. But you're there to accept it. Okay, so there we are, we approve the minutes. Okay, so as an update, I just sort of wanted to give a quick synopsis of where we are in this process. And I am putting together a deeper outline that I was working on a little bit with Rick. It sort of talks about how the site plan review process and the code communicates with the subdivision regulations, just so that we're really clear on where we are. And once you do it in that outline, it actually does become clear. But what's interesting is, at several points, as we know, there's an opportunity to extend some of the deadlines by mutual consent of the board and the applicant, which brings us to where we are now. So where we are now is in discussion of this preliminary plat, sometimes referred to as sketch plat, and have extended the deadline of what was listed by the state or by the village so that we can have the discussion that we're having and then clarify what that discussion means, right? So that means that we make comments, they make changes. They suggest changes, we make comments. So it is a back and forth, it is not any one voice necessarily leading. That is how an application happens, right? Hello, I'd like to present you with my idea, what do you think? That's not me saying first and what you know, all of that. So we're all in keeping with the harmony of this. And to remind us all that we have, as board members, the right to ask maybe any question we want within, right, like legal questions, but it's not broken down to just subject. So if we have questions about building materials, you can ask them during this discussion at any point. You don't have to wait for that topic. It's not like playing cards and you have to wait for them to be broken. So following that, I'd actually like to ask, since we have Guy with us tonight, that there are a few legal questions that I think as a board we should discuss in private with our council. So I'd like to have a brief, and I recognize you're all here and that wasn't on the agenda, so I will be respectful of all of your time. But I'd like to see if we could have a motion to have the private counsel. Do you have to say the official phrase of that, Tammy? Is that right?
Close session.
And everyone, closed session. So everyone will be able to stay in this room and we'll just go up the stairs for a minute. So do we have a motion to have some time with Guy? Second, approved? I mean, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna take a brief recess from the public and. All right, so let's get back to order with the public president and I think, oh, how much do we have now? Counsel and team and public were waiting. And now we will have an update from Colin, just here from MRB that.
All right, so since the last meeting, if you might recall, as the Atkins team had a roadway cross-section that was about 22 feet wide, MRB had recommended a cross-section that would be 26 feet wide for the roadway and all that.
Yeah.
MRB has been corresponded with the DPW superintendent along with the Atkins team. And we had a conference call and discussed the various roadway cross-sections. And at the end of the meeting, Dustin, the DPW superintendent, decided that the Atkins cross-section was acceptable.
Okay.
So we'll be going with that, except there will be a small change to it along the curved section of road. And that is, at various curve on one side, on that side of each road, there will be a two-foot offset, then a ten-foot travel lane, then another ten-foot travel lane, and then the uncurved shoulders.
Okay.
The other change is going to be that the pavement cross-section, as opposed to the roadway cross-section, will be the MRB one. So that's a change of one inch top quote to one and a half inch.
Okay, okay.
Three inches wider, 15 inches sub-bases out of 12 inches.
Okay, so the Atkins agreed to MRB's suggestion of the deeper 23. Okay, all right.
And that is all I have.
Does anyone on the team have any questions about the roadway submission presented? This other drawing of last week, I believe, that came in. Does anyone have any other questions for?
Wait, so if they had recommended 22 feet, you said 26 feet. Is there a reason that, like, why had you recommended 26 feet and then said, okay, 22? What's, I mean?
So there's a bunch of different things going on here. Number one, as has been discussed before, impervious area is one consideration. So less width is less impervious area. On the other side, more shoulder room does also mean, you know, more room for plows in winter when it comes to moving snow and ice. But it also could impact how traffic flows. If you have more area, people are gonna go faster.
Right, there've been studies, we saw one of the studies forward about wider streets are actually.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious.
But so how could Dusty say, yeah, 22 is fine from the DPW standpoint? It's because assessing it, saying we can get our equipment in here and 26 was a safe thing, that's where MRB came from, but it was not necessary. Is that?
No, it's not 100% necessary, as long as the DPW superintendent agrees with it, which he did.
Why do you recommend 26 in the first place as opposed to 22?
So again, we, it's just the standard kind of cross-section that we use with most of the towns and villages that we represent.
You think so, is this for technique?
Potentially, yes.
Great, we think so too.
The other towns we represent tend to have a lot of higher traffic loadings than Truins Roadway. So that's also one consideration. They usually have to deal with more, you know, if someone stepped outside of the road, getting them off the roadway is, could be much more of a priority in those other towns we represent. Whereas here, there's not as much traffic, you can get around them fine without creating as much of a safety issue. And again, it's a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere here. And so slowing down that traffic is going to help out with, you know, allowing pedestrians to safely move around the site. However, I should also clarify, where we refer to as a fire hydrant, it will be 26 feet wide if that is your state park.
Right, yeah, I think that I could acknowledge. Okay, yeah, okay, great, thank you so much, Colin. And now I believe we're ready to hear an update from you.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Adam Walters, I'm a attorney, Philip Suttle, representing the neighborhood housing services. Let's see, we've got lots of people here tonight, but they'll speak up and introduce themselves at the appropriate point when they start talking. Mostly here to discuss some revised plans, because some feedback we've had. So big picture, we've been discussing the site plan and the preliminary plat for, since November, kind of the last three months, we've been going kind of topic by topic, issue by issue. We tonight are presenting what I would call the updated concept plan. Based on, we'll run through everything tonight that we've done by way of changes. We'll hopefully get some feedback. Really, the next step in the process from our perspective will be, once we've got kind of a consensus or general understanding of the concept plan that makes sense to the board, the engineers would kind of go do their work. So this plan, I just want to be clear, has not been engineered. Andy hasn't done his updated calculations, et cetera, certain purview surfaces still changing, all of that stuff. And MRB hasn't done their review. All of that will come in the next round.
And I'm sorry, Adam, I should've just said, and I'm sure you're about to, that there are two variances to address that from your BZA meeting.
Yep, so the revised plans really cover all the feedback we've had over the last three months. The DPW discussions and the decisions that have been made by DPW. The 50 South Street property, which for two members who were here last month, we signed a contract for 50 South Street, so that's now part of the project. A new application or the updated materials that we submitted includes a lot of authorization for that property or authorizing us to apply for all approvals necessary relative to incorporating that piece into this project. So you have that. We also, we've been to the BZA at your suggestion. We needed three approvals from the BZA, two variances and one special use permit for nursery school. I use the word need loosely, that was a central issue in front of the BZA. I'm just gonna say from our perspective, you suggested to us the project might have a better design if we got a setback variance and a parking variance. So we went for those. The setback variance, the BZA granted. So the setback line is now 25 feet within the project site. And the updated plan shows all of the buildings that are 25-foot setback from the public right-of-way. Interesting thing we learned is the BZA measures setbacks typically from the edge of the building.
Oh, that's a super fun code issue.
Yeah, it's from the right-of-way, property line. So we got the variance from the property line. And it's 25 feet. All the updated designs of the buildings are now 25 feet on those roads. Changes the feel of the development rather than that. The, we did get a special use permit for the nursery school, there's a big update to talk there. Lots of changes we made as a result of feedback endowed with them and the nursery school and your previous input. And the parking variance, they wanted more data on where our numbers came from to justify the variance. Basically, they were saying, we want to make sure your 1.2 number is adequate. And we get that you have data, but most of your projects are NIFCA and we want to see data of more rural, less urban environments. So we're in the process of gathering that.
And when is the next, you're here to have that for them for their next meeting?
March 12th.
March 12th.
So before you meet again, tell me.
6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM, Giles, got it?
6:00 PM here.
So the parking variance remains open. The plan you have does assume a parking variance.
Okay, and that's the one Ryan's.
That's the one Ryan's got there, but I'll let Ryan explain some of the details. So I guess I'll say, you know, we could, our plan would just be to kind of run through issues based on the letter and how we set things out. Obviously, if the board has anything they want to discuss on any other topics at any point, just let us know, the team is here. With that, maybe I'll say, Ryan, why don't you start with road access in 50 South Street?
Absolutely. So as for the last meeting, when we were with you last, we were discussing options for the alignment of this road, integrating the 50 South Street property. What we've done, actually, I might turn that a little bit so we can see.
You could come sit over on the side or scooch yourselves around, because if he doesn't much more, I can barely see now.
I can see.
But, any doubt, you are, I mean, you can rearrange them.
Maybe it's just you should.
No, you can come closer, you can.
With all due respect, when the board says they can't see here.
These will be up for, and they're probably directed for everyone to sort of look at. I just wanted to speak to what is identified as segments, and is now designated as a public road connecting the segments of 50 South Street, so the curved road to South Street. So again, just to reiterate, the cross-section of that road is 22 feet. It's two 10-foot travel lanes with a two-foot offset for the one side of the road, which is curved. In the instance of this segment, the curve is on the north side of the road. I don't think we did mention, but the curve offset is going to include, as per correspondence with the DPW, a painted stripe that designates that.
Okay, painted what color?
Sorry, painted stripe, two-foot offset of the curve.
Is it gone crazy green, like the Vicoy path?
There are DOT standards, which I'm sure we'll have to comply with, and I believe it's gonna be white. I'm looking at the.
Excellent. Significant aesthetically, okay.
So I just want to go kind of through the string dimensions so you understand what the section of that road looks like. The curve is on the north side of the road, and then there's a five-foot tree lawn or planting strip, of which there are deciduous shade trees planted 40 feet on center, launching that soldiers down that planting strip. Directly after the five-foot tree lawn, there's a five-foot sidewalk. And that gets you to the property line. So the back edge of sidewalk, in this instance, is on the property line.
And this is tab C.
Yep.
May I have a quick question? Since you obtained the property on the east side, against the building and some of the acreage there, are you gonna be able to put some of the utility lines on the property as opposed to under the road now?
So it's the preference, and it's actually expressed within the code that it is the preference not to have utilities run beneath the pavements for obvious reasons.
Sure, so you'll be able to?
There is, within the right-of-way, within the property, there's a clear dimension of 24 feet six inches to the south of the road paved surface. So the intention is to put the utilities, not exclusively primarily, I'm looking at our civil engineer outside of the road there.
But under the trees.
No, the trees.
The trees are on the other.
Trees are on the other.
There actually are trees, and just to clarify that one time, there are trees shown on the south side of the road as well, but they are offset much further from the edge of pavement specifically for that reason to facilitate a corridor where subsurface utilities move on, but that won't be in conflict with the proposed street.
So that is the final proposal for the access to South Street.
Okay.
Ryan, do you want to jump to?
Well, I'd like to speak to Pennsylvania, if that's okay. And I'm sorry, I don't have a large plan for that, but one of the issues that we've discussed, I believe I was not present for it, but it was advised or a preference was expressed at the last meeting was to provide a sidewalk connection along the segment A of the public road, which connects to Pennsylvania, the west side of the site. So now, almost identical in cross-section, or if you were to take a cross-section, it's the same profile, it's a 22-foot wide road, the curve is on the north side of the road. The difference with this alignment is that first, it's not straight and narrow, as the alignment is identical to how it has been shown for some time. Where the right-of-way allows, there is a gamma five-foot tree lawn that diminishes basically as you get to the final portion, right before you get to Pennsylvania, where the sidewalk is on the backside of the curve. We subsequently had a review meeting just this past week with representative of the village fire department. There is, one of the compelling reasons for the alignment of the road where it intersects with Pennsylvania is because there's an existing fire hydrant there.
Okay.
But there's another fire hydrant in very close proximity. So we're looking at the availability of potentially moving the road further south to maintain a tree lawn so that the sidewalk's not directly helping against the back edge of that.
Okay.
Just speaking of pedestrian safety and issues related to that, it's within intention that the curb side of the road is one of the same as the side of the sidewalk is on. So, you know, very good consideration.
Keep going, you doing good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a hard time remembering where.
Nursery school?
Yeah, there's certainly been a leak there.
Nursery school is, you hear last time there's as well. So the nursery school.
Perhaps most notably, what you'll notice is that the shape of the building is assumed a rectangular in your shape. It's slightly different from what was shown in the last. The square footage is 4,000 square feet on the.
This is on D, right?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Ren, I'm sorry, I missed some of your words in the beginning, okay?
All right, I'll try to rephrase the text.
Oh, it's fine.
So the building itself, the configuration of the building is slightly altered. There was always somewhat rectangular, but now it's a pure rectangle. Following on the point of the front yard setback, the building at the closest point is more or less on the 25-foot setback line of the front yard on the western side of the site. The parcel itself has changed since the last iteration insofar that the, pass the forgiving, jumping between plans, but this stretch, this trap was previously a parcel unto itself that had no proposed development on it whatsoever. It's since been consolidated with the nursery school parcel to become one unified parcel. So it's a very large and somewhat irregularly shaped parcel.
And is that, that's why you got increased parking spaces?
Eliminated the backyard, side yard.
Yes.
Similarly, just speaking at the highest level of the configuration of the lot itself, in acquiring the 50 South Street property, the property line shown, the interface between, it's lot seven, the nursery school is on, and lot 15, 50 South Street is on, has also been reconfigured.
Okay.
To more or less facilitate the program exterior recreation space of the nursery school. So the parking spaces and access, we know that historically, so if you may recall, there used to be a very simple drop-off loop with significantly fewer drop-off and no parking spaces that were heading in front of the school. What we've tried to do is to be good neighbors and be sensitive to the surrounding context in putting the parking behind the building, kind of away from the street edge. And also considering the options for access to said parking lot, we've held it away from the neighbors that are not obviously part of the project. And also seek to, seek, to maximize the distance of intersection offset. So the center line of the pull-in at the south, point of the two-way drive-in, driving that out is approximately 110 feet from the first intersection. So that provides additional queuing and safety offset with regards to anticipated traffic. We spoke at night at the BZA meeting about the anticipated queuing and kind of the life of the school and the other floors. So the idea that, you know, twenty cars are gonna arrive all at the same time as the morning time, there's staggered programming that very deliberately is seeking to not have all parents arrive at the same time for pickup or drop-off. If you have further questions about that or not, I'm also able to speak to the representative of the nursery school here that can further elaborate upon that. If I might just speak to the logistics of the vehicular circulation. So the idea is, again, it's a driveway that is both an in and out, shared driveway when you pull in. And there are one, two, three, four, five low-end curbside drop-off and pickup spaces that are very proximate to the school. The school actually has helper staff at curbside ready, so I guess that you pull up, you open the, they open the door.
If you allow that.
Say, hey Billy, welcome to school, and you pull out, you're on your way very quickly. But it's very efficient and the idea is that, you know, it moves cars through it quickly. There's no other vehicular circulation in this southern leg of the drive. Then you turn a corner and double back. And as you double back, there are angled parking spaces, 10 on the south side of that road and seven additional on the north side of that road. Depending on where you park, you have the option of walking this way around the building or park here and walking the sidewalk with a fence.
Okay, so that gray area in the middle is the sidewalk.
That island is, I mean, it's an eight-foot wide sidewalk with a fence that does not allow for young children, or anyone for that matter, to do the.
They have to go to the crosswalk.
They have to go all the way to the ends of the crosswalk for them to know the navigation of the equipment happening and to know the crossing in front of the car, because that's a one-way queue. So it's not.
People are gonna use the front.
I'm sorry?
Like, rather than walking all the way down, do you think they'd go into the right?
This way and do something like that, possible. That's largely why the fence turns the corner to try to curb that behavior.
So we faced some of that at the Truins Road, Central School this week with a drop-off of kindergarten groups. And right now, what I like about this is there's parking spaces that are intended for that drive-through sort of drop-off. Right now, we also use the drop-off lane slash the fire lane. So that's great, but people do, and I feel like it's a really good point, but we're all kind of, you know, you want to go the safest way to walk and you recognize that, well, you might want to jump in. An on and off night, certainly we all kind of drive however we drive to the parking lots of the school. But to do it that way, because you wouldn't want to cross in front of the in and out of the intersection.
That's right.
That would be, that would be not a good idea.
It would be a fairly squirrely move, I mean.
Yeah.
Wait, so I have a plan. What's the, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say I wouldn't do it, but I mean, if it's a concern, perhaps the most immediate response would be to extend the fence to wrap further to.
Why, like, you just want to be forcing people into a crosswalk? That's the reason?
The fence is there. Yes, no, that's it. You want to try and channel people into a crosswalk, because in the morning of the drop-off, this is gonna be fairly busy. And so you just, you want to make sure people are crossing that type of it. And that's, I think over time, you find sometimes people change the rules a little bit. But remember, these tent spaces are really all staffed, so they're mostly, they're gonna follow the rules, but they're most gonna be there before the drop-off starts. The extra seven spaces are additional visitors. Those are the parents who sometimes come in to be reading with kids and.
Don't you think the staff will plan that along?
Staff will plan that along?
I don't know, I just think the fence is terrible.
I think they're going from no parking to parking.
Parking, yeah. Also, it is, I mean, at our school now, you can either jump onto that along at the elementary school, on the long sidewalk by the parking area. Your most direct into the school is to get on the sidewalk as quick as possible. And then you walk all the way along. Or you go through the really big parking lots, you don't really want to do that, but there's one designated crosswalk within the tenant. So it's funneling you, you know, to use the crosswalk or get on the sidewalk as soon as you can. Which I think this is too, and I suppose the curve towards the intersection is to protect that very last parking space in the block at ten. Is that why that's heard of like that?
Yeah, the idea that it's heard is again to deter people from taking the shortest route. I mean, it's solely a safety deterrent and it's, you know, it's. The parallel parking, perhaps the greatest risk is maneuvering of vehicles getting in and out of parallel parking. So I have the crosswalk in front of them. A one-way directional traffic means that.
No one wants to back over, Colin, when. No one wants to back when we're calling them.
We're a parent coming to visit, we're staffed.
Other?
Other, any other questions on the nursery school? So the BZA did issue a special use permit based on this design. So obviously, if the board does that, further changes, or we go back and amend this special use permit, obviously, we love not to do that, but whatever the board feels is appropriate, that's what we do.
Okay, and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The, the design for the school, it's indicated, but so far, no details of materials or height or, I mean, we don't know that much about what it would look like yet. I just wanted to make a suggestion. Since we have, that's going to be a fairly good-sized roof, and we have the two center larger buildings that have fairly massive roofs, and they all face south, and they won't have big trees around because there's parking in those areas, is to consider solar earlier than later and design the roofs accordingly so that they can take a larger amount of the panels with a slight scope will be done. I have it on my own garage, it works quite well, but I think this, these three roof surfaces would be very adapted.
Appreciate it.
So, I believe that the last meeting we were, I say we, I was absent, we didn't discuss landscape and I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about open space and vegetation again, as it's been quite some time since it's been released. Tackle that as a topic that we know we accept and we wanted to circle back to. So there are, I'm gonna kind of try to break it down into typology to be able, first, streetscape. I have, I'm looking at my crib sheet with metrics of all sorts of good stuff here. See, they don't need to want further detail. But in general, the site plan has been developed with an eight-foot-wide tree lawn, either at the edge of the road or on the backside of the curb before you get to a five-foot sidewalk. Within that tree lawn, trees are typically spaced at 40 feet on the center. And 40 feet might sound like a lot, but it's actually, I would say, the best practice. And so probably if you want to invest in the beat zone, the individual tree, do not have canopy's competing with one another. The only other question, I think, of a continuous canopy, cathedral-like condition in a number of years with the tree space that have, that on-center space. So that's the entirety of the roads, all public roads. So the Segment C connecting the south, entirety of the curbs in, and the entirety of Pennsylvania, with the exception of this one little sliver again where the road dips out. And actually, another reason why the road dips out there is to avoid an existing tree that is, that's, so, in terms of salvage, or not salvage, but save trees, is when possible.
How thick would the tree is still going in?
I believe, and I can confirm that, but I believe the requirement is two-and-a-half-inch caliper as per...
So that's five, six foot, right?
No, not at all. It's very sizable. Two-and-a-half-inch caliper tree in the span.
I guess it depends what tree it is.
Sure, and different species will grow at different rates, but within the first five years of a tree like that, you can expect it to be somewhere in the 35 to 40-foot range, depending on the species.
That's in how many years?
Oh, in plants, in five years.
I've been shocked. I've had the good fortune of planting ninety-two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees and I've been blown away that in the first three years, that's how they, how quickly it is.
Does anybody maintain the water, then fertilize them, worry about them from...
As a general, there would, there will be a warranty period as part of the contractor's responsibility because it's all the estate contractor, that's typical standard practice. Ultimately, these trees that I'm referring to are within the right way and technically will, are part of the property of the village.
Of the village, okay.
Do we ask any questions? When, I looked at your extensive plant lists in the earlier schemes, I assume that hasn't changed too much?
It's, we have not submitted nor made any recognition of any of that.
And they're virtually all native?
They are, we, specifically designated within the column of the plant list, and I have it with me. If you'd like me to take it out, which are native and which are non-native.
And...
It's predetermined in the end.
To answer your question. And these alleys of trees, are they multiple species or...
So, we have not designated specific species per location in any statements to date as part of, we not to aspiration of preliminary, or we anticipate that where we are fortunate enough to receive preliminary, that that would be done between preliminary and final. There are upshots and downshots to that city of Vithka and not that, that village is the city of Vithka, but they have a strong probability of greater diversity. There's something to be said about homogenous road trees.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, this is a good time during this preliminary discussion before, it is if you have specific opinions on what those trees should look like to make that known. Not so tonight, but by the time, you know, they're gonna submit for the, or you could add this condition after, but if you know, what would it be?
I mean, there's uniformity of appearance versus the potential liability that take, you know, I mean...
They ask for a pump and, yeah.
Yeah, and having a homogenous species.
Sorry, can I mention that?
The way the soils have been described here might present a bit of a problem for certain species of trees, right?
And we have looked at that and, you know, something, I mean, not to bury you in metrics, but the sheer number of trees that we're proposing to plant as part of this project is not insignificant and for the numerous conversations that have circled around the topic of concerns over high groundwater or groundwater in general, I think that it is well worth noting that the amount of water uptake that the quantity of trees for post as part of this development will take is going to be profound, it's gonna, I mean, I have a 200-year-old willow in my backyard and my basement still floods, but if you cut that tree down tomorrow, I'd be in a cove. You know, and willows are on the plan list for those work.
But they're definitely worth a lot too.
We're looking at trees that are going to...
Compatible with the soil themselves.
And I think, right, some of my concern in thinking about tree species too is seeing the sad little things that try to make it on the street for, and it's not their fault. But this is not, I think this is a unique area and diesel fuel will be built to buy them all the time. But, so, yeah, it's good to know there's diversity.
I can't reiterate again, two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees going in.
They're pretty sturdy already.
You're gonna feel, in the first summer of planting, you're gonna, it's gonna be a noticeable impact.
If we are, if we are venting ourselves, or, you know, presenting ideas. I like the idea of diversity, but I like the idea of a uniform look. So, you know, rather than mixing crabapples with oak trees, obviously, you can have one.
I, I would say that insofar that you were to embrace if this project were to move forward and wanting to build something other than a homogenous species for street tree, typically, a standard practice of how to deal with that is to plant them in groups, sort of clone-like species together and do it in a, I mean, it's, it's a lot of little detail on the ones that are showing, I'm sure you understand well, that it's not taken largely, I mean, it has a really profound visual impact on the streetscape in the neighborhood as a whole. Crabapples are not going to be street trees, so it'd be large for a broad, distributable street.
Can I, can I divert to just trying to make sure that I understand how things are going to go from the street to the front yard? So, we're gonna have a street, then I assume there's gonna be a curb, then there's a...
So, the road, the road has typically, and I can, there's just like a small anomaly for the, almost exclusively on the entirety of the site, the road has only a curb on one side. And typically, typically what it means is that you're pitching, hyper-elevating the road. You pitch the stormwater towards the face of the curb, and then it's entering into a curb in the sewer, in the, on the curb side. So the road, if you think about the road wherever it is, you know, curves on the north side on this segment, north side on this segment, and south side on the, on the brown field.
Okay, so, so on the, let's see, let's just follow that little curb around to these three parcels on the west side there. There will be a curb there, so it'll be street, then eight feet of tree yard, right? Then five feet of sidewalk.
That's right.
And then front yard.
Technically, and this is just to frustrate the minutia of this, there's a one-foot offset between the back edge of the sidewalk and the, and the actual property line.
Okay, okay.
With the exception of this one moment on Segment C that I spoke about, the rest of the layout actually has a one-foot offset between the back edge of the sidewalk and the technical lot line, which the lines come here.
Okay, alright, so wherever that line is, then the property line, then from there, it's a 25-foot setback from that one?
Yes, right.
Okay, alright, so on that side where there's no curb, what's gonna stop people from parking in the tree yard?
I don't have a really satisfactory answer to that. I would say that in general, having trees 40 foot on the center, that is certainly enough for someone to navigate and maneuver a car.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
I mean, the short answer, I think, would be is it comes down to, of course, without a curb.
Yeah, because, you know, if you look at the rest of the village, tree yards are, you know, filled with cars. So it's...
And you're not allowed to park anywhere outside the driveway.
But that's why I was wondering whether curbing, you know, and I know that has other consequences, but that would, that would deter that kind of, in those areas where, you know, a few areas really, would, would it be...
And I would also note that this is a concept, and without having cranked through the final stormwater calculations, I mean, it's possible that the micro-grading that the old jarney video of which way the road pitches might necessitate, you know, extend to a curb beyond what is currently shown.
And then, so part of the reason why I think why we don't have parallel parking, except in designated driveways, is for safety, for people pulling in and out from their parking spaces. So I think it's possible that the property owners, if they're taking notice of that, flowers are allowed to turn into parking cars.
Yeah, owners may be the ones parking.
Ooh, yes, so not just, not just be visiting during grass root. Yeah, alright, good point.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on with open space and vegetation now.
I think she has really...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I just like hearing your...
I don't think it's agreeable.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Just disagree real...
I know that like in a village and you're not supposed to do that, but it's convenient if you're just like zipping by your friend's house. Oh, they're, the whole driveway's full. I don't know, I mean, if one of the issues is limited parking, so we have less per view surface, I'm okay with people parking inside the little, for a second, and pull off a little bit.
I'm not talking about...
It's sort of spaces that have come to be permanent spaces that were never actually part of the design. But I think it's, it's a good point, and it does speak to parking spaces in general. Something with BZA, I think that too. And you had a set, I'm sorry, this updated program assumes the reduction, right?
Yes.
It does, so it's currently showing is 1.2 parking spaces per lot, which is a reduction to 1.3.
For the residential.
For the residential, yeah.
For which is left, right, and left.
Okay.
Okay, so we spoke about streetscape. As far as the open space and vegetation. And speaking about the residential lots, so again, 25-foot offsets. All buildings are designed with front porches, so there's, you know, and driveways are specifically located to the side as opposed to in front of the building, so that headlights are not in anyone's living room as they pull in at the end of the day.
Say that one more time, please, sorry. Driveways are specifically oriented...
So, just speaking about the front yard and open space, so all buildings are designed with front porches that are technically 26 feet, 25 plus that one foot sliver from the sidewalk. And driveways have been specifically aligned to be on the side of houses and the side yard as opposed to in the front, so that you're not...
Pulling your headlights into the other, okay, great. I know that was a good issue brought up.
Yeah, similarly, it's just worth noting, you know, the alignment of roads if they intersect are specifically offsets of the, there again, shining headlights into your neighbor's front windows if you're driving by. The nursery school lot, we didn't really speak so much about the open space, don't jump. Sorry, this is disorienting, jumping scale, but there's a very, very jump, so the building's 4,000 square feet. It's more than the side of the building and then some in a exterior fenced-in exterior recreation playground in the open space. We are showing a fence line there that wraps the entirety of it and returns to connect to the building, so it's totally enclosed.
Hit most of it.
Yes, I just, one other thing with regards to residential lots. I know it's been a long time since we've looked at, was a, really a technical document that has a lot of hatches, it's hard to read, but just as far as the overall appearance of the, of the development, the front yard and a significant portion of the side yards are proposed in times if there are no mobile graphs, which is a drought-tolerance species of turf seed mixture that doesn't necessitate regular mowing. You can mow it once a year, you can mow it twice a year, and it more or less looks like...
It's low.
Six-inch high graphs. I have a picture to show you if you'd like to see it. And then as you work your way to the rear yards and then further to the perimeter, it's what we're proposing is meadow seeding with interplanting. And the idea is that, in a sense, we're looking to, it's, the correct term is not reforestation because some of this was, or has not been for a very long amount of forest, but actually increasing the amount of overstory deciduous shade trees to provide a really heavily vegetated buffer at the perimeter of the site as the, as the rear yards about the neighboring properties.
So we all have unique feelings about deer in our village. And I get a kick out of seeing the hoof prints up the sidewalk in front of my house. But I know that we all love birds, and I know that that was actually a concern of the public in terms of this field and what will change. So would there be some specific intention to plant bird from these species?
Insofar that you could imagine that there's a band that's much more pronounced than the actual document and the prior submission where there's a carnivore integration. I mean, you can think about the front lawn as being a more conventional, more manicured landscape that was not, you can hear this with what you got across at the village, but as soon as you get to the rear yard, it really goes very natural very quickly and it kind of goes from that meadow, which is the ultimate deer habitat, excuse me, bird habitat, and then bleeds into an ego tongue, you will, that edge of kind of woodland to edge, which is ideal for habitat, you know.
Great, okay, good, thank you.
Just a couple of final points to hit, they're covered in our letter, but let me say it again. So, in terms of the parking variance, we have a, appears for the BZA on March 12th. They're gonna make the final decision, we think, on that night on whether to grant the variance or how much to grant. They did talk about perhaps granting less than 1.2, 1.4, 1.6, 1.8, all discussed. I can tell you... Um, I can tell you, but from what I got, there was a fairly negative reaction to the land banking concept for parking, just too complicated down the road, they just, they did not seem to embrace it. So, um, we'll see where that goes, but land banking may go away, which means we would just add the spots now. Um, it would be our intention, if they were to hold two to one, two parking spots for every unit, to keep them on this side of the building and not go back to the old design, where it was a parking in the front, you were kind of a building that sees a parking. The, the design here with 25-foot setbacks has a much more neighborhood feel, and we're gonna go to some of the renderings in just a few minutes, but, um, we think this really makes a lot of sense, and it's a good design, so we appreciate all the feedback and input, this, this really is a, it's a really competitive product. Um, we did some lot renumberings relative to the plaques, again, eight and seven were combined, this is now all seven, about 2.3 acres. Um, well, this lot has now become lot eight, nine, 10, 11, uh, and then we've got lot 12 is the big one, um, and the, the new lot, we've designated lot 15, it's kind of a lot now, but we thought we'd just put it in the plan. So we showed this. You asked us about plans for the house, the plans would be to sell it after the project is done. Newer can come in, we tend to be less concerned without location of things when they're already there. Um, so we think that works fine, and that, at this point, is the intention, that house will be sold after the project is done, and where it is installed. Um, TCAT Service came up last time, we did some follow-up with TCAT. They are apparently embarking shortly on kind of a master plan, and they basically said, we'll think about it, but we'll incorporate you into the master plan. So, um, one discussion we had with the BZA was, well, would a bus come in, if a bus came in? And we kind of came up with, they could easily come in the road, come around the road, come through the parking lot, and move back out if that was desirable. There's obviously also going up Pennsylvania Avenue, but I think they seem to agree that more logical concept would be a loop within, or even back out the option. It's a possibility, it certainly works, um, from, in terms of the roadway lanes, a bus could easily... Those are, those are the highlight, we've covered a lot. Um, let's spend some time on the renderings, I think that's the last thing, is the architecture. We had some discussion last time, there were some things that I think people did not react very perfectly to, those have been revised, so I'm gonna ask Elena to come up and kind of run through...
Before we jump into that, I'm sorry, Mr. Albert.
Can I get some clarification on just a couple of things? One is that, um, this goes back to parking and, uh, front yards and backyards and so forth. Uh, in the exterior of the Crescent, there are nine lots that are market rate. My understanding is that if you are building a market rate house, you are buying that property and have control over it.
Yes.
So the issue of whether it has no move lawn or whatever is up to the homeowner at that point.
Sure, yep.
And, uh, I guess the other thing, uh, this is, this is really a question for Claudia, but virtually all of those market rate houses are rendered as duplexes or triplexes. Uh, I guess why, first of all, and secondly, is it realistic?
Well, like Claudia answered, uh, all of this.
The, the labeling of those as duplexes or three-unit really has to do with whether or not there's enough square footage on the lot to accommodate that many units, based on the village code. So that would be the maximum units that could be built on that property. So if you were to purchase one of the properties that had the capacity to put three units, and you wanted to put three units, we would be allowed to. But if you wanted to put two units or one unit on that parcel, that would also be, of course, allowed. So if you wanted to add a second unit or a third unit later on, years later, the lot would be deemed big enough, based on the ability to build, so that's why they're labeled that way.
It's important to clarify, so those numbers are based on the straight numbers density unit? A lot of the code, no affordable housing laws?
Fifteen thousand foot of thrust units that make five hundred per number two, and then five thousand...
I know there's some concerns about that. Um, we also, we've talked a couple of times, and I just want to reiterate, so if I mine this lot and I want a garage, um, I'm gonna talk to Claudia about, hey, I want a garage. Any substantial changes from the concept plan would require a site plan amendment. So while normally in a village, if you're building a same-time-of-home, you already said about that little follow-up. But, yeah, for any change, any substantial changes, and we've been talking about ways to kind of build in some flexibility, so when Andy does the analysis, he's gonna kind of try to establish a maximum impervious surface per lot, and, um, obviously some things to work through there, some details to come back to you with, and some things to think about, but the concept would be, if it's consistent with the approved concept plan, doesn't have to come back, but if you're adding things like a garage, or other things, or changes, anything substantially has to come back. As a site plan amendment to the overall plan.
Okay. Good job.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Elena.
All right, so, yeah. Let's speak about our first townhouse concept, so last meeting...
Tabs if you like, in the, uh, material.
Are we able to fly our way back into the... Sure. Uh, at the last meeting, um, it was expressed that the, uh, the style of kind of the roof that we had with this was not as popular, felt institutional, so, um, we had our architects go back and look at a modified design for that particular building. For some context, this, this building here will be here in the site. So that means that the end is actually facing the street, not the front. So for that reason, we asked our architect to add wraparound porches, so that, um, it wasn't so much of a straight face, and also a little bit of a vague window bump out to add a little bit more interest to that end of the building. Um, so there are also questions about the size of porches in general, so... The, um, porches are approximately five feet, six inches by thirteen feet. So that's, that's fairly large, um, but we feel pretty confident that it's enough space to put some chairs and tables and your body. And in our layout, there was a concern about bulk storage, people didn't want the porches to start to clutter. So, um, each unit does have what we call a bulk storage space. So all of the one and two-bedroom units within the multifamily building have twenty square feet of bulk storage. The three-bedroom units have thirty-seven square feet, and then all the townhomes have a larger thirty-seven square foot closet that's accessed from the rear of the building.
So this, I'm sorry, so this twenty-five foot bulk storage is located where?
Inside you, inside each unit.
Like as an attic, or...
As like a closet.
Okay, in addition to other closets that may or not be there?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Are there any questions on, or comments on this particular concept?
No, so this replaced the, um, institutional Swiss lodge?
Yes.
Though I thought there'd probably be good cocoa, should I actually go in? Okay, but we would, thank you, sorry, I don't need to be rude, I apologize, okay. Shalay, sorry, sorry. Okay.
So we have, um, additional, I don't, I don't see on this rendering board either, so we thought we'd bring this one as well. This would be the other townhouse building, the other rental townhouse building, I need to verify. And this particular building is located here, on the site plan.
Elena, what lot number is that, can you see?
Lot 12.
Thank you.
Good. And then the last, if you can sneak that out. So you have some models of what the affordable-for-sale townhomes would be based on, just so you get a feel for what, what they might look like. So they will generally be in this, in this style. Um, these particular homes will be designed by Claudia, so if you have specific architecture questions or comments, she could certainly answer those right now.
Okay. Um, and then to clarify, the first view that you showed us, which is under our tab F of the duplex that was turned, which unfortunately, um, corresponds with lot four?
Yes.
Thank you.
Were there any further questions or comments on architecture?
Um, in terms of the design?
No.
There was... Building materials for the particular buildings, do we, do we have any ideas yet of what you would be using? I know I missed the last meeting, but I did watch the, you know, video of that. But do we know what the siding, roofing, and, or the materials are for the decks and porches?
The siding, um, we're looking at fiber cement siding rather than vinyl. Um, the roofing would just be, um, typical asphalt shingles. Um, the railings would be a vinyl material.
Vinyl. Have, you know, issues with vinyl and flammability, and the fact that it's still quite toxic. So I do have a bit of a problem with that as building material, especially since that's, you know, sitting there maybe smoking and drinking, having a good time. But it's, um, it's, it doesn't last very long, unless you have a type that does, I don't know. Most of it is fairly thin, some of this extruded, it's all strong, they use for decks and steps and so forth. That's one place I would do a little bit of rigging, if you could find something other than... Because that's what you have to see, you're right next to it. You know, the stuff higher up, alright, that's sort of more forgiven, but something that you have to sit next to, and that being vinyl, there's, there's something unattractive about that.
Yeah, I've been squirming a lot, uh, internally about plastic porches in my brain. It just doesn't feel like, I was trying to think of the last time I was on one, and thinking about where we go in the village and what that feels like, and the continuity of the rural feel of our community, um, and have been sort of balking at that. I recognize that there are reasons why we choose affordability of building materials, but I also largely recognize certain materials are more approachable, um, you can use it of human happiness.
Sure, we can certainly do other materials. Do you know the sizes, these porches are a lot smaller than some of the others? Do you know the size of these ones? I don't know, we haven't gotten directly into porch design, but I think Claudia could speak a little bit more about.
There are things about these buildings that I kind of liked, um, but we could look at the, the actual, um, porch sizes more in more detail, is that they have a combination of porches that are inset, and then some that are sloped with a shed roof. So it gives you a little sense of privacy for your porch unit, um, and it makes the buildings differentiate. So I did a couple of duplexes on Corn Street in Ithaca, um, right where the, um, the corner of Clinton Street, where there had been a gas station once upon a time, you guys might remember, Tiana.
Working man's friend.
Sorry?
The working man's friend.
That's right, that's right. And you can look at those, and, um, one set of duplexes has this inset porch, and the other set of duplexes has the shed roof porches, so on these, I wanted to see if I could mix them up. Um, I don't actually review the floor plan, I didn't quite a lot of those, so I can't tell you the exact sizes of the porches, but they're actually kind of similar to the porches. So they're a little bit different shape, but longer, thinner porches, like what was described, the five and a half feet deep by twelve, thirteen feet long, would be closer to the, um, the shed porches. And then the, the shape of the inset porch is a little bit more attractive than the one square.
Yeah, I just, again, I always...
The bigger the better, I know, the bigger the better. And it depends a little bit on whether you take three units or four units, how the porches kind of feel and work out.
Yeah, it's just, I, most of the houses in the village have a pretty substantial front porch, and I think that that really contributes to the aesthetic feel of the village, and the affordability, again, of, of houses. Um, and, and on the five foot by thirteen foot, um, I don't know, almost, I think it's the bigger it's better, but, um, like, it's kind of hard to fit a, if you're gonna sit outside, you can put two chairs there, but you know, if anyone wants to put a table there, five feet sounds like a fairly substantial amount, but it's still, it's pretty skinny, that's what I'm saying.
There are, I mean, it's kind of like what you're sitting in, and then the porch, well, the end of the porch would be... And I agree, um, about the possibility of using wood, even though it takes more maintenance, and, and, you know, some of these porches don't have an incredible amount of rail, particularly the inset porches don't have an incredible amount of rail, so it might not be that tough to...
Spains and sealers today are quite the...
And you could do kind of fun things with, you know, cutouts on, on spindles and balusters to make, make things, uh, unique and feel older. I think that one of the things about some of these plans that you might see is that, uh, you might notice is that, um, the plans might be the same on the inside of the building, but the outsides are a particular design and not be cookie cutter all the same. Um, so if you look at some of the housing, like in Drive-In, which I pass all the time, um, you know, you'll see like a monolithic, all the same siding, all the same shaped building. The only reason you know one building from the next is because one says 103, and one says 104, and one says 105. You know, these are designed to be similar and feel like you're in the same area, but not the same. That's how you feel on this.
Thank you.
We also included fourth lands, Valda, before, and assume we've got those, we've almost spent a lot of time on those, but, uh, but it makes some sense as you, you and these guys, I'm kind of, it just helps to picture what's on there.
Quick question, I should have asked this earlier. The, um, some of these illustrations showing these residences show, uh, is it natural stone foundations?
It's not, so that, we, we brought in the material last time, uh, and had a discussion on that. We'll make sure we bring it back next time.
Okay, it's a simulated stone cast too, or what?
Yes.
Yeah, but it looks well, it's maintenance-free, and it holds up very well.
Is that used in this big chimney as well?
It is, yeah, we had that discussion, yes. We did, we knew you were gonna, it was gonna be a bad thing to miss the materials, so we're sorry about that.
Well, it...
We'll definitely bring them back next time.
Thank you.
And we can, as other gentlemen, right?
Okay.
So, I think we've covered high level everything we've wanted to cover. Um, you've given us some feedback, are there other issues, other things we haven't talked about? Is there anything else, any other questions?
Not for me, I mean, I think we're all, it sounds a bit closer now to that final engineering of a water irrigation system based on building placement. Um, the only change then would be the, uh, parking, which will affect, uh, water engineering. So that's something though, but our next meeting will be at the end of March. Um, would that be, we're gonna have time between the 12th of March and then March to get that completed. We have a sense, it's direction.
I think our goal would be to, uh, let the ZBA make its decision. Um, we'll, we'll update the designs based on their decision, we'll then commence the engineering process. It will take a little bit of time, plus it needs to go to MRD.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we wouldn't have time to review, even if they did, imagine it again before...
Even if Andy's life was ripped from his...
I think, I guess... I guess it makes sense to have that process going on. I think we have covered all the major issues, but if there are other issues we want to tackle in March, we could do that. We could also start to really focus on some of these concepts of conditions and things that we want to start to stop so that it's clear. Because obviously, as things continue to progress, there's more thoughts going on in terms of, you know, final planting plans, final architecture on things. And we're now at the point where we're doing a lot of work. We want to make sure everybody's comfortable with kind of the concept of all of these things are going to be spelled out post-site plan approval or preliminary plat. And we can start to, if it makes sense, what I might propose is we'll start to develop that kind of list of conditions. I would share it with Guy as a starting point, let him do the things he normally does. And then perhaps he gets it to you and we have some discussion on that next month.
Yeah, that's great. I think that from my, my personal standpoint on this project, with questions unanswered for me other than water mitigation, which I just addressed, is really specific details about building materials and internally as well. So I highlighted insulation and, we like, really want to know, because that's based to the longevity and the structures and at some point that gets to get really discussed. And so if that's, if we know some of those answers and we can have some props back for Victoria for the rest of us to really get that, and I think that would be a really good use of time. So we could be prepared to take a deep dive on building materials.
Sure. Jessica?
Yeah.
At the last meeting, did you talk about the trail?
We did talk about the trail, but what, what's your thought on it though?
Oh, no, I...
I can tell you, I can recap what we...
Yeah.
It was considered okay mulch is claimed, but not maintainable except seasonally. And so it was suggested by a board member that could, could we investigate it being paved? And then it was also acknowledged that that is adding some impervious surface. And so where do we fit and is it okay? But, so we talked about it and I, and I see no change has been made in the plan. Is it still mulch, but I don't know if that covers things you were thinking of.
We did note a narrative in the last letter, just kind of explaining that we do think it makes sense to keep it natural material. Keep it unpaved. One of the issues we were really concerned about is the proximity to that wetland. If we go with a paved surface and we're putting salt down in the winter, we're very close to the, there's really not a lot of places you can do treatment of that discharge before it gets to the wetland. And we also kind of just looked at, there's an awful lot of sidewalk in this project. It'll be very accessible during winter months. But that trail perhaps becomes more of a seasonal amenity.
For a speech...
A speech or a speech.
I, I would like to jump in. I, I can understand the desire to have it be permeable. I think there are alternative permeable materials to mulch. I think mulch is, is just too lightweight for the project. That you can, I don't know what they call the materials on the black diamond trail, but it's more...
Oh, yeah, what is that?
Some gravel.
Yeah, it has some gravel in it, but it's...
It's gravelly, nicely mounted.
Yeah, right, right, good point.
Just two cents.
Okay.
Will bikes be allowed on that?
Yeah.
Will bicycles be allowed on that now? Who would determine that?
The person with, on the bicycle? You wanna go or...
Well, so that's another interesting point and don't, don't challenge anyone else that didn't think about bicycles. But that, that black diamond trail is actually really is used throughout the season because bikes have changed. And so, so that's, that's an interesting point to check out that.
Okay.
One other thing, so have, have we noticed that there's a new fire department in Burdette? Burdette got some grants and some funding to town, those are Watkinshead, and they built a really beautiful fire hall and they've employed geothermal technology to make sure that the walk, the sidewalk and the, they're not called press pads because it's a little livery, the fire truck pads are geothermal so that, so is the whole building actually. So, so it was just really using that natural resource. And it's something that we sort of talked about with solar and, and the large community builder building as that. What are the heating plans? And I think that they were not anything along the lines of geothermal or solar, correct?
We're, we're definitely investigating some alternative energy sources, heat pumps, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, it's that I, I recognize that Burdette did get a grant, but I recognize that there might be other grants available to affordable housing projects. It's actually a huge commitment to, a huge statement on applicants' part for maintaining the integrity of our environment and before we're... And do you want to mention your idea of solar panels on a roof change or no on that big building?
Oh, I think I mentioned it a little bit earlier.
I thought that was for the nursery school, maybe I missed what you said.
Nursery school, which hasn't been architecturally conceived of, yeah, except for basic shape there, right? And I, I would assume it's going to have a fairly large, looks like a fairly large roof facing south. And the two larger center buildings, I think certainly could be incorporated.
Yeah, okay, okay, that was my understanding, I apologize, thank you.
And, and also I would suggest, you know, somebody like Duran Vandoor makes a beautiful decorative fence around it. So it isn't something that if you live on one side or the other side, that you have to see all that solar. You disguise it with a nice sort of berf front motif and metalwork, you do something nice with it. But you could get a tremendous area of solar.
Okay. I see the ease, all right. Thank you. Anybody else want to make any other statements before we say goodbye for much in the long?
I guess one final issue. We have been hearing, I think, early consistently throughout our project, that there's just a fundamental concern about why are we even dealing with it, it doesn't meet urban requirements. And there's, there's just been an ongoing concern. I think early on TBNA's lawyer sent us a letter outlining all of their concerns.
Shape presented.
They presented, right, and we responded. So I will say from our perspective, we've answered every question. There are no other variances required for this project. The two variances we have sought were really not required, but based on...
They were design suggestions, correct?
Right. And we, I just, we're happy to delve into that further at some point if the board wants to get into that. I think that response was more than a year ago.
Right.
But it's, it is on there.
Okay, and then I would just, I think, challenge any board member, if they have some, some notions right now to bring them up. If you have other notions, I'm not, I will not speak for all of them, but I have no concerns, nor does the codes officer, about this specific, as we've seen, without final ground, without final water mitigation, without those sorts of things. That so far this notion of spatial orientation density and the fact that it's location on a private property, not a village project, is all within keeping of our ordinance, as you replied to the lawyer. So, right, there was a notion that needed to be discussed about the roadway, though it was not because of the way our code is written. And Guy was all prepared to, to address that, by the way, last meeting, what, how we could make determinations between private roads, what those widths could be and couldn't be, but that is gone.
Right. This is all...
Right.
Quick, quick question. Does the entrance road, the wider one where the plan was, yeah, South Street, sorry, will that go to the village when it's completed?
Yes.
The old map roads?
The village. The village and preliminary and then approved and accepted.
So that will be a village responsibility?
Yes, and the DPW has accepted that.
But we would maintain the private utilities, we could get these back and consider it as possible.
Okay. Do you have the, just offhand, do you have the date of that?
Better?
Yeah.
There were actually two of them. Don't...
Just so that we can go back.
Yeah, how, Lauren, I will volunteer Lauren to get it to Tim.
Okay. Tammy, you have it? Yeah, we have it.
I have it.
Yeah, she just wants it.
Probably one or two.
If you needed to tell her and I can...
Yeah, yeah. Okay. She can serve it.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, huh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we now have fifteen minutes of public comment. Should we, have people who'd like to comment? Tammy, are you prepared to send her a comment? No, we can't be public right now.
I, I am ready when I'm ready.
Did we put out a sign sheet, are we gonna do hands? It's okay, I just asked. Okay, so, what time is that? Okay, so we have, I show hands and I'll just check on the first one I see. Sir? Yes, please, I'm sorry, I can't...
Just a couple of suggestions. One, there are, I believe, I know there are pervious tables as opposed to impervious that could be used for all the party. Fancy for extra. They all place and seem to work well for what I see in the documentation. And secondly, regards to the nursery school in the realm of the water solutions just trade offs. Where the nursery school is moved down is now the school, particularly the playground, run along the river. So that puts your playground next to room four, so... So you can trade off that to do the impact of the waters of all roads, which then takes away your visual of the road. Seemed like something that concerns the philosophy. And one final thing on the major site plan on the schedule, I know this, the nursery school scheduling is so poor.
Yes, sir. May I offer you any, okay?
That's great, no, that's great, it's important, thank you, Mel. Was there another one? Bill in the back?
Thank you, William Connor, Forty South Street. So a couple of things. Mr. Chairman, you said that there's no questions for you, but I've been asking questions. So it, it seems to be clear in your mind about the, the issues that I've been bringing up about South Street. It's width and it's distance from the schoolhouse lane to this development. I think the public is looking for a discussion about that with us to know what, what, how those questions are answered. And I think I've been asking those for quite a long time. And I think waited a reasonable long time for the, the village to, to respond. Several months ago, I think even back when Mr. Giger was chair, he said that at the time the attorney was gonna provide some feedback to us and yet, I've tried to attend every meeting, but I don't think those have been addressed. So before we leave the roadway issues, hopefully we still address those, I'd asked in past meetings that maybe MRB could address it. It sounds like they're very in tune to the dimensions of everything that's required, but they always seem to leave out the part about the dimensions of, of what's in our village code. And so I'd really like to hear MRB's can put on that as well. Remember, he's talking about 22 to 26 foot roads that he recommends and South Street's only 20. So things don't jive. So I'd really like to hear about that. The applicant mentioned tonight about buses could easily turn. If you know me and how long I've lived there, every spring, every right of spring, I put out markers because buses cannot turn onto South Street without driving on my lawn. So I know from all the school buses that that just doesn't happen in reality. So, so please be very cautious about inviting buses down South Street. They don't fit. Tell you from living there, they don't fit. Last, I went to the BZA meeting. They eliminated our discussion, so this board should know, they wouldn't allow us to talk about their, their decision back in 2016, granting the variance on Pennsylvania Avenue. At that time, they would like to really dive into what's required by our village in terms of a major subdivision. Again, has to go back to the road that I've been harping about. They clearly in that transcript did not even address that. And so I hope you realize that and maybe having to go back and really reconsider their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, William. And actually, I will extend public comment because I think I would like to, I'm glad you brought up the issue of South Street width and I apologize that that was part of the discussion that would have been presented by Guy, who is with us now. So he can address, address that.
Well, the, I think the, the major issue that is easy to address relative to South Street is the exact language in the code that describes distances between intersections. And it, it is very clear that, one, there's a couple of different waivers that apply. Two, it's an approximated distance. It's not mandated. The other issue that is pretty, is interesting in respect to that is schoolhouse road is not a village road.
It's still a road.
It's not a village road. So it's, whether or not that is a planning issue as opposed to a legal issue, those are two different issues. Schoolhouse road is a private driveway or a private access road to the school. But what the code clearly is talking about is intersection of, intersections of village streets. They're very closely parallel New York State Village law in that respect. So, and, and the distance, I believe, off the top of my head, I could pull it all out, I don't even know if I still have it, but it's either 400 or 500 feet. And differential indifference that is the concern is what some would call using the minimums, minimums. It's 20, 30 feet, it's not a huge variation. And I believe the code actually says approximately or around 400 feet, around 500 feet. It's, it's a general standard relative to blockway. One of the things that exists in the village law of the state of New York, which is paralleled in several sections of the Truman'sburg codes, both in relation to subdivisions, block and lot layouts, as well as in some of the zoning, is the concept of a variance. I think the state of New York recognizes that some streets exist. There were streets and roads that existed before there were ever villages or towns in this area. We are an area of New York that was born out of largely legislative declarations. We were, we are territorial towns is the origin of this area. As opposed to colonial towns or what you might call trust towns. Long Island, more trust oriented, has to do with the way the title evolved from Dutch. Classic colonial type towns are some of the ones that existed along the Hudson Valley. They were settled and developed and laid out well before anything out here even existed. We were the western frontier back then. This area was developed under what's called a concept or largely related to territorial towns, blocks and locks. Most of you have seen some of this on some of your surveys, part of Great Lot 82 or Military Lot, whatever. These all relate back to the original layout of land based at the Revolutionary War era. So a lot of the roads that exist have existed since that era. And those are generally described both in village law, which incorporates the definition used in the town law and what are called highways by use. So when, when the code, the village is talking about new street dimensions, they're talking about new streets, non-existing streets. Highways by use are highways, they become highways automatically. There's a section of the village law of the state of New York that specifically expressly says that. And it is construed both by this language and by the course to say it's adopting the highway by use standard set forth in the New York State Highway Law. So roads that already exist are already in use. They are lawful existing public highways. And they do not have to be reopened to whatever distance may be mandated under a code or whatever distance may be in the highway law. Classic example, you may all recall the, the county plan to expand Cottington Road. And if you know all the areas of Cottington Road that can become problematic as you go past the universities and then it narrows up and cuts behind the creek down near German crossroads and then you can run all the way out to Wilson. There are areas of that road where it narrows up substantially, it gets very old. And the county took the position that since it's a county highway, it is therefore three rods in width minimum, which is 49 and a half feet. And so they designed their entire highway improvement project based on 49 and a half feet. Of course, people who were gonna lose some of their front yards or some of their trees said, you can't do that, that's my land. And a lawsuit erupted and the court sided with the landlords and said, no, it's a highway by use. It is only so wide as the historically traveled lanes plus the necessary impertinence to support safe travel on those lanes. Curbs, ditches, gutters and on occasion culverts and other facilities like that. So there are areas of Cottington Road, which has been around since the Revolutionary War era, where the actual highway width is less than 35 feet, the entirety of the highway. There are areas where the pavement... There are areas where the paved width is less than twenty-five feet. And that is still a lawful public highway in all of the municipalities through which it passes. And it has to do with how you interpret and apply highways by use and what that means under specifically the Highway Law and the Town Law, because the village law incorporates that. So that's, in a nutshell, some of it, but I think when we get into final dimensions of roadways, maybe we can get into a deeper conversation about not the technicalities of the law, but how it applies to this application.
Can I comment back or not allowed?
I think not this time.
Okay.
But I appreciate that, and, um, certainly will look for a written comment if you, if you had one in, in the next.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Should I stand or?
If you'd like to, you don't have to.
I prefer to sit.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just, um, I'm just happy to extend. Um, just a couple, a couple of comments and questions to all of you. If, I, forgive me, Bill, back there, but I think that maybe God gave pride understand what you were trying to get at. It's not a question of South Street highway by use. It's a question of the width of South Street and buses making turns that drive onto his property. And that's what he is asking you to please consider. It doesn't matter whether it's, uh, it does matter, but it doesn't particularly matter the definition of what's a highway, what's a road, et cetera. It matters that there's not enough room for buses to make turns without going on his property. Okay, a couple other things. A few months ago, I suggested that I thought there should be a ten, at least a ten million dollar bond put up by INHS. I haven't heard anything about that. The reason for such bond is that whenever there's big heavy machinery or whenever there's construction, neighboring houses and all of you should get real estate appraisals, often get cracks in their foundation, cracking walls, windows, go out square, buildings go out square. I wanna know what INHS is gonna do about all that stuff? What INHS is gonna do about the emotional trauma to people like Kathy's husband, like a few other people, like the woman we, uh, we dated, said her father just wanted to die in peace, you know? How are you gonna handle that? I'm not hearing any input in that direction. Um, also, one thing I'm wondering about is number fifty South Street. I had the opportunity the other day, personally, was locked out of the house, to walk around with her, and during that time, we try and help her figure out how to get into the house because the fire was on and it was freezing that day. I had a chance to observe fifty South Street all the way around, and what I saw was a house not in very good condition, need a heck of a lot of work. So before you was, have to sell it, you would have to do a lot of work, or you could go back to your original, uh, your original, um, thing, which was to help people buy houses by putting their own grunt labor into houses. But I wonder, that's, I liked that INHS. I do not like INHS right now because I'm gonna tell you, I should become a developer. So, okay, please go back to your original mandate. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say was, um, okay, the bond, just the biggest thing. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'm glad you brought back up the issue of the bond, so I will, because I'm unclear how that functions, I'll, um, seek to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, was there another hand? Um, Jack, I saw Jack next. Did, did you raise your hand or you just pick your hand up?
Oh, no, I raised my hand.
Nope, okay, so just let me say, no, you're definitely next, Jack. I just was trying to keep it straight.
I will bow to whoever's in back.
You're next, thank you.
Um, Jack, that's thirteen South Street. You have three and a half minutes. Number one was, I hear the, the words at the urging of the planning board to seek a variance from the BCA. Uh, I reviewed up to three meetings back. I didn't see an urging, I saw a nodding of the head, you know, a little bit of this and a little bit of that, but I saw no vote taken by, uh, the board to actually, you know, uh, you know, refer it. Now, is, I have questions, not answers. Uh, is subdivision and site plan taking place at the same time? Um, okay. The BCA called, um, this development a neighborhood within a neighborhood. And to me, that represents, you know, something that's somewhat segregated. You have these long roads that separate between South Street and, and Pennsylvania Avenue to get to this place. And economically, you're putting in fifty-six units of low-income housing, and you're calling it a neighborhood without taking into consideration the other neighborhood that surrounds it that consists of seventy homes, all of them, you know, at least eighty-five percent of them that conform to the zoning of a fifty-foot setback. So, you know, just to, you know, also, the BCA said, well, we can do anything we want, basically, because it's its own neighborhood. So that was the rationale. And also, it has its own street, we're granting a variance of fifty percent. And, yeah, I would just like to go over, and I think that it's, it's really economic segregation. You know, you're, you're putting this neighborhood apart from that neighborhood, and if you can't integrate neighborhoods, then it's not gonna succeed. And, uh, let's see, is that three and a half? Well, that's about it, I think.
Okay, then, there are.
Just questions.
Those are, oh, do you not want it? I have some answers.
Okay.
Um, so, because those are, those are very good points. You always make good points, frankly. Um, thank you for continuing to do so. Um, so, there was no vote by the board because it wasn't a condition. We didn't, we didn't, we weren't making a resolution to have a condition attached to the, uh, per, per approval. It was a, a suggestion. And so I think what we all just learned is that lots of, yes, why don't you seek that variance and head nodding is urging, or whatever word. But no vote was needed because it wasn't that, we weren't making a condition contingent upon approval. Um, so they, on their own, right, went, went to go, to go do that, add our prompting, prompting makes you feel better. Is subdivision and site plan review going on at the same time? Um, and the answer is yes. And so for my own, and again, I hope, I hope to have an outline that's a little bit more cohesive, that I can then submit to Tammy, and if she can make sure there's no typos, perhaps it's something that could go up on the website of the village, is that the code talks about site plan review. Um, and there is this really interesting line in the very first phrase that says, the following details in this chapter may be used as guidelines, um, for, for site plan review by the planning board. Okay, then, so that's the code. Then we have subdivision regulations, which have, um, very detailed things that you have to go through. So once we determined that there was a, uh, that this was a major subdivision, while we've been looking at site plan review, because there, it also lists, uh, documents that we would want to review and, and all of those things, we've been mostly adhering to subdivision regulations. I'm not sure if that actually makes it more clear, um, but that, that is what's happening. So yes, the parameters described in both are, are being considered, um, especially where they, in each spot say, you must make sure, and they overlap. You must do a seeker. You must, uh, perform the full EAF if you find. You must, you know, those things. So that, um, I think, I think that's it for that. So, thanks, Jack. I said that really loudly. Try to simmer down. Okay, um, next, next hand, sir?
May I ask that? My name is Tom Hurst, I live at seventy-one Curious Street. I would like to question the design of parking around the, the childcare center. As a handicapped person, I would be, I have one shot at a spot there. If a person is bringing a dog or if there's another handicapped person on site, um, yeah, is a problem. So I, it's typical for a handicapped parking spot to be near the door, so I don't have to go by the fence around the corner. So please consider that. And there's a unit, I'm forgetting now, might be four, but there's four parking spots above the unit, and it seems like, you know, unbelievable parking stress in, in a building right there. There's three units in that one building. I can't remember, I can't see my computer.
Locked in, locked in.
You know what, yeah. So how, how do those four spots serve the three units that are supposed to use those four spots? I mean, that's your one point two, but it doesn't work. And if I lived in this apartment place, I'd wanna have a place to go. That's part of the reason, I think Jack is speaking about, you know, if you have a village, you gotta have a drugstore or a restaurant or something to go to. You know, I think of the people that live near the dollar store, uh, it's the only thing they've gotten out there to, you know, come near. I'm sorry, I get a little mixed up.
That's okay.
Um, what I wanted to call attention to is, there's no place that people would really be trying to get to in this development. And the people who are out, eh, around the, the development, why would they wanna go to the center? You know, it'd be nice if there was a center, if there really was a center. Someplace to go, it'd be attractive, people, we don't have that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, and I'm seeing that applicant, um, definitely, I think, took notice of the suggestion that BCA compliant described, whether it was in their plan or not, but clearly described closer for use at the nursery school.
I did have one other thing. Uh, oh, the bus. I take God about bus. It's a fantastic resource in this community. Unbelievable. And, and if I lived in this community, I'd wanna have God about. Um, so, though.
So talking to them as well as TCAT.
Essential, essential, yes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good thing about that bus system, it's a small bus that you can, it's not a great made of concrete to negotiate.
Okay, um, do we have more comments from the public? Going once? Yes.
I'll, I'll stand up because I'm, I want a chance to address the nursery. Did everybody get anyone?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, at the last zoning meeting, we had people get up very passionate and look like we didn't care about the nursery school. The nursery is attached to this, and we see it as traffic, not that we don't want the nursery school as traffic. And I, I wanted them to hear that, and applaud, you hear, these are really nice designs. We can't wrap our head around such a huge project on a twenty-foot wide street. That's what we're having trouble. So I would like to say this really quick. First of all, Free Press got in there, two spots instead of one point two. But I'm going to go with less. We have forty rentals, times two would be eighty cars. Let's just do sixty. Let's only do seven instead of, uh, ten staff. Twenty-two parents coming in there. You should have three-year-old classes, four-year-old classes. And I used to do nursery, so I really get upset about the nursery being hooked up to this and that they might not be able to have it there. Now we're up to eighty-nine people, possibly, and that's a low number. You have ten people on South Street coming out. You have buses going in. You have I don't know how many people in town that are trying to come down that street. I've never been comfortable with the traffic and how we're gonna do it with the snow and all that. And then to add as a little side note, we have the funerals there and the buses. And a side note with the raking, who's gonna rake the leaves to get them to the side? So that was my thing. And one real quick thing that I wanted to say, we have people that are going to interlaking because of taxes, and where are we gonna get the kids for the school? The schools still be there, but we need homes for families. That's what we need with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Um, great, and there's our fifteen minutes extended to the food. Thank you. Okay, um, so now we are on to, um, old business.
Uh, just one thing I wanna bring up just.
No, Colin.
I think I heard it mentioned earlier, sorry, you could've misheard, um, discussion of the dedication of the road to South Street. To best my knowledge, that hasn't been accepted yet, uh, by Dustin, so I just wanted to clarify a bit.
Say that one more time, I call this.
To best my knowledge, Dustin, the D W superintendent has not said yes or no to dead dedication of that roadway to South Street.
Oh, okay, alright.
That is still ongoing, waiting for response.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
And they don't really, Dustin's decision.
Okay. Of course, decision. Okay. Mr. Connor, did you hear, were you able to hear that?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, okay, so now we are into old business.
Two, three meetings ago, we talked about maybe asking the mayor or somebody at Port Public Works about a stop sign, Dorsey, Bill, and Lake. Very dangerous term.
Is part of the vehicle traffic law that's proposed, you know, it's been, um, probably very, this Thursday, there's some, it's part of the, so it provides, uh, a, a, it's a word, necessary.
It's a pretty dangerous one.
They're discussing, we take it out, we put it in, we take it out. I think this is the fourth time since I've been here, it's been.
So who should go to that meeting to make a point?
Whoever want, everyone should come.
Who's meeting would it be?
Everyone should hang out with me at every meeting.
Thank you.
Every single one of them. Seven o'clock, Thursday night.
And is that at Port Public Works meeting? I mean, whose meeting where this would?
It's the Board of Trustees, trustees, a trustees meeting.
Oh, the village board.
Yeah.
I don't afford that.
And I, you know, I, I excuse Tom for being here, but it, it actually has been bothering me about the dumpster at, um.
That doesn't bother you?
It does bother me.
Just the dumpsters was just the?
Yeah, and, and I know it's, it seems like a small BCA, but it's, and the tenant's gone, so what, so there was the, the, uh, the dumpster that's at the, the property, where people live, and I can't remember the property number. Okay, because, because what occurred to me, like, there with, you know, keep a poster, oh, but the tenant is maybe leaving, well, the tenant is gone, but they even need a dumpster, is sort of what occurred to me now.
Well, I thought a dumpster can be very good.
It can be, there's less things to dive in, but luckily we have planning discussions to dive into. So, so, but that, Tammy just let me know that, um, and Tom, if he was here, it's okay again, that he's not, um, could speak to that, so I'll follow up with him with that for the whole business. Is there any other whole business? Morgan is having a business.
Morgan did a whole business.
Um, uh, do you have new business?
Morgan's new.
No, no new business. Although, oh, heads up, heads up on new business that could be coming down the pipe. And thanks to John, who went to the BCA meeting and the rest of us that come, highlights wanting to, um, there's a chance that.
I was there, only half of it, that's all.
Oh, and also Vicki, thank you. Um, there's a chance that we will be discussing the Mills Pop property. Um, at the last BCA meeting, it was acknowledged that it is in the street over the district. I'm not sure that we will, but I think also it would be pertinent for us to pay attention to how that moves along. To just, we should pay attention to everything, every meeting.
But isn't that in one of those zones where we have to review it?
It might be able to be done, a seeker, I think some of the seeker will need to be done, but it could be done by the BCA. It might not be done by the planning board. It, it would be, it doesn't necessarily need to be assessed by, it has to be assessed by a group agency, um, so it, that's where that sits. But I just wanted to, um, just kind of, and, you know, stir up more, for people to get more, you know. Okay, so, um, if there's nothing else, I think that we could maybe have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Daniel.
I don't like starting.
How do you people?
Thank you, Hannah. And Vicki seconded. Ellen, David, I, Eddie, Hope, Nate, okay, thank you.